All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here or tuning in online. Today is Tuesday, January 10th, and it is 9:04. So we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We're going to ask folks who are with us in person if you are both willing and able to stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation will be delivered by Pastor Debbie Garrett of the Open Door Homeless Resource Center. Pastor, thank you for being with us.
Thank you. Let us bow our heads. Father God, we call upon your name this morning to thank you for watching over each and every one of us, allowing us to arrive safely into 2023. Father, we invite you into our meeting place. Let there be love and peace among us. Father, today we lift up to you our Mayor Brandon Whipple and the City Council Leaders of Wichita. It is our prayer that they work together with all integrity and transparency as they serve the communities they represent. Lord, search their hearts and remove everything you find that is not of your spirit so that they may effectively serve this city, bless and protect their families from all evil. Father, we lift up to you, our Police Chief Joseph Sullivan, his family, our police officers, firefighters, and other frontline workers and their families as they put their own lives on the line to keep our city safe. Father, as we lift up to you, our city leaders, we ask that our city come together in unity to create a better plan of safety for our school-aged children. Help us to remember the less fortunate, the students, parents, and staff at the Clark Elementary School, youth horizons, and those struggling with mental illness, and the homeless in our communities. All these things we ask, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Madam Clerk?
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 3rd, 2023.
As every member had a chance to review the minutes, and if so, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion on the minutes, then I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members will cast their vote. I've received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Selection of the Vice Mayor.
When I go into our selection of the Vice Mayor process, is there any nominations for the position of Vice Mayor? Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, sir. I would like to nominate Councilmember Mike Hoheisel for Vice Mayor.
There's been a nomination for Councilmember Mike Hoheisel as Vice Mayor, and I believe there was a...
Second.
Second by current Vice Mayor Tuttle. I apologize for interrupting. Is there any further nominations? Is there any further nominations? Is there any further nominations? If there's no further nominations, then I'll make a motion that the process of nominations close and that we elect Councilmember Mike Hoheisel as the next Vice Mayor. Is there a second? Motion has been seconded by current Vice Mayor, Councilmember, current Vice Mayor Tuttle. So with that, Clerk will open a roll. Members will cast their vote. I've received seven yea votes. That motion does pass, and Councilmember Hoheisel is Vice Mayor-elect until he takes the oath of office.
Please write in. I state your name.
I, Michael Henry Hoheisel.
solemnly swear
solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Kansas
and the Constitution of the State of Kansas
and faithfully discharge the duties
and faithfully discharge the duties
of the Vice Mayor for the City of Wichita, Kansas
of Vice Mayor for the City of Wichita, Kansas
so help me God
so help me God.
Now, before we get into the next section of the agenda, I do want to recognize Vice Mayor Tuttle, who did an amazing job this last year. She's someone who filled in anytime I was out of town, but also went above and beyond, meeting with community leaders throughout Wichita and making sure that the city was really firing on all cylinders. So with that, Councilmember Tuttle, we'd like to present you with this keeper as a token, a small token of our appreciation for the service that you have demonstrated over the last year as Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I just want to make sure, pardon me, that I thank my colleagues for entrusting me to be Vice Mayor last year. It was certainly an honor to be a part of this team and certainly an honor to have that role. I also want to thank staff. One of the responsibilities of being Vice Mayor is to meet with the Mayor and the Cedric County Chair and the Pro Tem. And so we had monthly meetings and had to follow up periodically with additional information. And so staff was always very kind and helpful and swift in making sure that we could continue to foster that partnership. And as always, thank you to the community. Wichita, I think, is the best city to live, learn, earn, play, and pray, and I'm just really proud to be able to serve. Thank you.
Can't be done without 15 ballots. No, sorry. That's all I'm going to say about that. Madam Clerk?
Awards. The GFOA Distinguished Budget Award.
If you're here for the distinguished budget award presentation, please make your way to the front. And I'm going to give you one second. I... So the Government Financial Officers Association has presented the City of Wichita with a distinguished budget presentation award. The Finance Department has received this award for the 2023 adopted budget. This award is presented to selected cities with budgets that are prepared based on the highest professional standards. The award is provided, again, by the Government Finance Officers Association, the premier peer organization for financial officials. This is the 35th consecutive year that the City of Wichita has earned this prestigious award. The award is based on a comprehensive review that focuses on four areas, including how well the budget serves as a financial plan, policy document, operations guide, and communications device. Comments received from peer reviews complimented the city on our long-term financial planning efforts and the policy issues and priorities discussions included in the budget. So here to accept the award is the City Budget Director, Elizabeth Goldtree. I don't want to mess it up, right? I might have messed it up. I apologize, Elizabeth. Elizabeth Goldtree, who puts so much work into our budgets each year, and we appreciate her so much. She also goes above and beyond for us electeds, taking time out to really dive into details on certain items when we need extra information. So with that, I do want to just recognize Elizabeth, and please come on up and say a few words.
Yeah, it's really, we receive the budget, we apply for the budget award every year, and we receive comments back from the peer reviewers. And it really is important to us as we continually improve the budget document. This year, we made some pretty major changes to the budget, and I see a lot of people here who are part of that in departments. If you look at a given city council agenda, you see the City of Wichita does a lot of things every day. And the budget document really is that one document a year that contains all the different services and operations we provide. So we're really proud to be part of that, proud of all the people that we work with every year to make that happen. So thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Tracy C. Mason, Sr., Ruler City Incident.
Is Mr. Tracy Mason here at this moment? If not, I believe he's the only person on the public agenda. Therefore, we'll go on to the next item if Mr. Tracy is not here. See none. Madam Clerk?
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 4.
As every member had a chance to review the consent agenda, and if so, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion on the consent agenda, then I'll make a motion to accept items 1 through 4 and exempt agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Wonder how this is going to go. Seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll. Members will cast their vote. I've received seven yea votes. That motion does pass, and well done, Vice Mayor. Madam Clerk?
Board Bids and Contracts, dated January 9th, 2023.
Welcome and good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council, Josh Lauber, Department of Finance. For January 9th, 2023, the board of bids are as follows. For engineering, we have the 29th Street North and Greenwich Road Signalization for Phillips Southern Electric Company Incorporated in the amount of $519,370. We have the KTA Bridges Waterline Relocation and Spruce Avenue Waterline Extension for Don Linger &amp; Sons Construction Company Incorporated for an aggregate bid total of $644,994. For purchasing, we have the Pretco Saddle and Saddle Tees for Core and Main LP for $61,545. This is how to become a vendor with the City of Wichita. These are our current open request proposals out on the street, and I would recommend to approve the bid boards as recommended.
All right. Is there any questions for staff? See none. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. Bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item. If there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. I've received seven yea votes. That motion does indeed pass. Madam Clerk?
Petitions for Public Improvements.
Good morning and welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. Gary Janson, Public Works Engineering. The petitions for your consideration this morning include signatures representing 100% of each improvement district and are valid per Kansas statute. Dugan West Kellogg Commercial 2nd and 3rd Edition in District 4 includes a new petition for paving. Dugan West Kellogg Commercial 2nd Edition Phase 2 was originally approved by the council in July of 2021 for paving improvements. Developers submitted a revised petition with revised budget to meet current market conditions to cover the cost of a private bid. So again, that's revised paving improvements petition. Staff recommend City Council approve the new and revised petitions and budgets, adopt the new and amending resolutions, authorize necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Is there questions for staff? See none. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item. If there is no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the new and revised petitions and budgets, adopt the new amending resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. I've received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Project Wichita Overdose Recovery Kit Expedited Delivery.
Chair recognizes the Honorable Bob Layton of the manager's office.
Thank you, Mayor Bob Layton, City Manager. I'm here today to talk about a partnership with Safe Streets Wichita called Project Wichita Overdose Recovery Kit Expedited Delivery, or WORKED for short. As you know, we are experiencing an opioid epidemic and a fentanyl problem here. Not, well, I should say, I was going to say here in our region, but actually throughout the country. It's recognized by medical professionals as well as law enforcement professionals who have had to deal with that problem, especially here in the county. One of the drugs that has served as a weapon to assist with overdoses of opioid and fentanyl overdoses has been naloxicon. And it's a life-saving medication. It reverses opioid overdose, does it through blocking the receptor site. We'll get into all the details because I'm not a medical professional. But I will say that research has shown that community-based distribution to laypersons has been determined to be a cost-effective method for dealing with the overdose issue in a community. And there's substantial research that shows the benefit, not only of dealing with the overdose immediately, but more importantly, in helping with substance abuse and, excuse me, with treatment for substance abuse and helping recovery. Just to talk a little bit about the numbers, Cedric County and the City of Wichita have been disproportionately impacted by this crisis. In 2022, Cedric County had the second-highest vulnerability rate or risk out of 105 counties here in Kansas. Opioid-related hospital visits increased 230% from 2018 to 2021. And it's important to note that that's nearly double the state average. Projected fentanyl-related deaths in Cedric County are estimated to be 300 this coming year. It's also important to note that many of the occurrences that have been experienced are along the Broadway Corridor and along the West Kellogg Corridor. Safe Streets Wichita has been a leader in the implementation of substance abuse or substance use prevention strategies since 2016 and has been actively involved in harm reduction strategies since 2020. They've also written a comprehensive report on evidence-based strategies to address the opioid epidemic. In 2022, they entered into a partnership to offer the first free intramuscular naloxicon program in Cedric County. It's currently one of the only free programs in the state of Kansas. Previously, they've also been involved with our police department and other agencies for the free distribution of Narcan, Narcan, excuse me, for motels, hotels, and other lodging areas in some of the city's overdose hotspots. Unfortunately, Safe Streets Wichita has encountered a funding shortfall that questions its ability to continue the distribution of naloxicon in the community. And as a result of that, they've asked for funding to get through the next five months and to distribute 800 kits to individuals in the community who suffer from opioid and fentanyl overdoses. The actual cost for the kits would be $17,000. There's also a distribution cost of a little over $3,000, bringing the total project cost for the five months to $20,675. The grant would be given to Safe Streets Wichita, who would administer the program, and the funding would come from our opioid settlement funds, which we have received and continue to receive as settlements are worked out between the state and some of the opioid manufacturers and distributors. Law Department has reviewed the proposed contract with Partners for Wichita, which is also known as Safe Streets Wichita, and approved it as deformed. So with that, I recommend the City Council approve the contract with Safe Streets Wichita for the WORKED program and authorize necessary signatures. I should note that this is considered to be a temporary program, right, to get us through a five-month window before FDA authorizes the distribution of a new Narcan drug, which actually can be considered an over-the-counter drug, so it'll be cheaper and easier to obtain. And between now and the end of the five-month period, our police department will be working with Safe Streets and other providers to determine a long-term strategy for the distribution of Narcan, not just to actual individuals, but to businesses and other agencies that are impacted by the overdose crisis that we're currently experiencing. Again, I'd be glad to answer any questions. Also, we have two representatives from Safe Streets Wichita that are here today, Lisa Veda and Jessica Blackburn.
Well, Mr. Manager, we have two members on the board right now for questions, I believe, for staff. And then when we open up to the public, we can hear from the organizations. So as you indicated, you are willing to say have a question. So Councilmember Blueba?
Thank you, Mayor. And last night at our District Advisory Board meeting, firefighters were talking about how essential the Narcan has become and how it's a necessary tool now in their work. I am curious about the funding. What kind of funding was there that is no longer available?
I'll let them, the representatives of Safe Streets Wichita, talk about their funding sources.
Okay.
And also, as we put together a longer-term program, anything that the city would do with opioid settlement funds would be considered to be seed funds. And so the challenge would be for the agencies that are impacted or that are involved in these programs, that they generate other private funds that either match or exceed the contribution of the city.
Okay. The reason I'm asking, I'm just curious, because I know there's so much ARPA funding and so much other funding that's starting to dry up, and just want to continue the discussion on how we're going to make up those shortfalls once that money stops coming in.
I will remind you that the opioid settlement funds are limited in how they can be spent, and this is one of the eligible expenses as listed in the settlement agreement.
Great. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ballard?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate all of the community partners coming to the table. This is a huge problem that we all see every single day, especially along West Kellogg and North and South Broadway. So I really appreciate everybody taking this serious and trying to do our part to help. So thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions for staff? See none. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I will open up for input from the public. Is there input from the public on this item? No? If there's no further input from the public, we do thank Safe Streets for being here, then we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this. Vice Mayor Hoheisel?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say I appreciate all the work that Safe Streets and other organizations are doing to help fight this epidemic. This is a crisis across the board. It touches so many people in all demographics. So thank you for being out there and working. And also, Councilmember Ballard, I think, thank you for your work on this as well. This was your brainchild. So I do appreciate all the work you put in on this as well. Thank you.
Further discussion? If there's no further discussion, I would also like to thank our community partners, our staff, folks who have really come together to try to create a plan to save that projected 300 lives that will likely be lost in Kansas this year due to the opioid pandemic. Wichita is not unique as a top-50 city in being caught up in the opioid epidemic and the fentanyl issue, but we are unique in the way that we address these problems. And that is a collaborative approach with our nonprofit community, with our medical professionals, and with the city. So with that, I'm just very proud as Mayor that we can come alongside each other and make sure that we take this problem head-on and try to save as many lives as possible. So it's with enthusiasm that I make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the proposed contract between the City of Wichita and the Partners for Wichita, doing business as Safe Streets Wichita for WORKED and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. I've received seven yea votes. That motion does indeed pass. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Water Conservation 2023 Rebate Program.
Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of Wichita City Council. For the record, Don Henry, Public Works and Utilities. The item before you this morning is a recommendation to approve the city's water conservation rebate program for 2023. What's unique about this year's program is that it's being rolled out in the context of drought response. As we're all aware, Wichita and Kansas in general is situated in an area of the country that is prone to cyclical drought. We experience, you know, drastic swings between wet periods and dry periods. So the situation that we find ourselves in is familiar, is no cause for alarm. But we do have a drought response plan that was adopted in 2013, and so we're in a situation now where the plan calls for some measures to be put in place. If we drill down and take a look at the U.S. Department of Agriculture's drought conditions map, indeed, we see that Wichita and Cedric County, the lion's share of the area is included in an area that's experiencing extreme drought with conditions becoming more exceptional to the south and west, and with conditions becoming less severe to abnormally dry the further north and east you go. Again, this is a familiar pattern that we Again, this is a familiar pattern that we see when we experience these frequent cyclical droughts. What this means in terms of, excuse me, conditions for the water supply, the Equus beds wellfield is generally in very good shape, or about 95% full, based upon the last measurements. The groundwater is protected from evaporation, therefore, the levels decline very slowly. That's in contrast with a Laker reservoir, like Cheney reservoir. The conservation pool is currently at 80% full, while the 12-month moving average stands at about 89%. This is an important distinction to understand, because our drought response triggers are tied to the 12-month moving average and not the measurement at any one point in time. It's important to keep Cheney in mind as we talk about the drought triggers and the various stages of the drought, because the current water treatment plant requires that we blend surface water and groundwater together. We can't treat 100% groundwater. And what the graphic shows you in front of you here is that through time, we've experimented with various blends, we've changed the blend due to varying conditions, and with surface water depicted upon the top portions of the graphic, in green and purple, and the groundwater portion of the blend in the orange glow, it shows that about 50%, about a 50/50 blend is the best that we can achieve. If we take a look at the Palmer Drought Severity Index, the table in front of you has the drought index plotted on the vertical axis, and then time back to January 25, or January of 2005 is plotted on the horizontal axis from left to right. The green sections of this graph show wetter-than-normal periods, and the gold portions of the graphic show drier-than-normal periods or the cyclical droughts that we experienced, I was talking about. And if you take a look at the far right-hand portion of the graphic, that shows our recent, our current condition. And it looks very familiar and is close to what we experienced in 2011 and 2012. So again, this is not unfamiliar territory for us. And looking further back in time, based upon data from the Palmer Drought Index, we see going back to the '60s that it confirms that we do experience these two-year and one-year droughts. As a rule of thumb, we use about once in every 10 years for a 20% chance of entering into a temporary drought in any one year. Our most recent extreme drought condition occurred in 2011, '12, and '13, and we're in much better position now to deal with these conditions than we were at that time. During the drought, the previous drought, we hired High Plains Hydrology, a nationally-recognized consultant in water resource management and drought, to assist staff in taking a close look at our drought conditions, how our supplies react to drought, how our watershed in Cheney reacts to preparing rainfall patterns and runoff into the reservoir. We did the same thing for recharge into the equus beds and developed modeling tools that allows to better plan for and manage through droughts. As a result of that work, the current drought response plan was codified into ordinance in October of 2013, and a formal policy was adopted to use a 1% eight-year-long dustbowl-type drought as our modeled drought. Since that time, we've continued to operate ASR. When conditions are favorable, we're able to take excess flows from the Little Arkansas River and check them into the aquifer when those conditions are favorable, and then we utilize the credits that we get for that recharge. We store those and save them up for severe drought, particularly, they will be useful on the tail end of one of our modeled droughts, the eight-year-long drought. The last two or three years of that drought is when we would look to use the ASR credits. One important tool that we have in the box now is the design of the new Northwest Water Treatment Facility. I mentioned before that currently, we have to blend surface water and groundwater together in order to meet our clean drinking water requirements for the plant. The new plant will be a game changer, because strategically, we looked at the treatment processes, and it was decided to design the treatment trains to be able to treat 100% groundwater or 100% surface water independently of each other. What this will do is allow us to meet our customers' base demands regardless of the conditions in Cheney reservoir. So the current drought response plan is laid out in four stages. It's designed to be adaptive to changing conditions throughout a prolonged drought. It was designed with our customers in mind to avoid undue hardship. In contrast to the drought response measures, we do have a long-term conservation strategy and a plan in place where we have a 0.35% annual conservation target that we achieve, and long-term conservation is put in place to avoid unnecessary hardship on customers in terms of having to invest more in future water supplies and in our treatment resources and conveyance resources. We're able to right-size those and not have to worry about bringing on new supply within our planning horizon with the current conservation program. Again, the drought response plan is laid out in four stages. Each stage has its own set of measures that are implemented as we move through a prolonged drought. Again, the each-stage trigger is tied to the average level in Cheney reservoir, with stage one, where we are now at an 80% moving average. Stage two would be triggered at 69%. Stage three would be triggered at 50%. And worst-case scenario, stage four measures would be triggered once the average conservation pool measurement reaches 34%. The graphic in front of you here shows the average conservation pool measurement in Cheney through time. The pool level, the average level, is depicted upon the vertical axis on the left, and then time is January of 2011 through current conditions. And you see the drought conditions back in '11, '12, and '13, where we eclipsed phase two. We've been, since that time, we've been above the stage one trigger. And if you look at the far right-hand side of the graph, you'll see that now the blue line has gone below the green line, so we're in stage one. So at this point in time, it's appropriate to call upon the stage one drought response actions that are codified in Section 17.14.030 of the City of Wichita Code, and it states that the city manager will call on all water customers to employ voluntary water conservation measures or to limit or eliminate discretionary water use. The city shall offer incentives or rebates to encourage both indoor and outdoor water conservation, and the city shall implement conservation measures in its own operations in accordance with what's laid out in the drought response plan. A fair question, and probably the first question that comes to mind is, well, how long is this going to last? What does this look like going forward? That's a question that's impossible to answer with any certainty, because how long the drought, the stage one, will last is completely dependent upon the amount of rainfall we get and the runoff into Cheney reservoir. This far outweighs our demand stresses or our ability to conserve. And therefore, we had the city's water supply engineer run some different scenarios on the duration of stage one or based upon different rainfall patterns. And those outcomes are laid out in the table in front of you, beginning at the top in the light blue row, under average rainfall conditions, we could expect stage one to last in full the fall of this year. With drier-than-normal rainfall, but not as severe as our modeled drought, we could expect stage one to persist until the summer of 2024, with conditions within the reservoir returning to more favorable about July of that year. If our modeled drought conditions were to continue, historic drought conditions show that stage two would, or that stage one would persist and continue into late 2024, when stage two measures would be triggered. The next three slides simply illustrate what was laid out in the graph, or in the table that we just looked at. Again, the blue line on top shows the projection with Cheney reservoir returning to normal in late 2023 under average rainfall conditions. The green horizontal line, I should mention, is the phase one trigger. Yellow is phase two, red is phase three, and black is phase four. Again, with less than average rainfall conditions, we would stay below the phase one trigger, but avoid phase two until in mid-year 2024. And then if we, if historic drought conditions persist, and we have little to no runoff into Cheney reservoir, we'd see phase one persisting into late 2024, when we'd see the phase two trigger being pulled. Again, in summary, we are in severe drought conditions. This is familiar territory. We're set up really well to manage through these conditions because of the work that we've done, the tools that we have in place, the drought resiliency plan. And then I can't stress enough about how much of a game changer the Northwest Water Facility is going to be in terms of how we manage through drought going forward. In fact, we would be able to meet our customers' demand on, our base demands, on 100% groundwater and avoid stage three and stage four measures altogether through the modeled drought. And with that, if it's okay, I'd like to turn the rest of the presentation over to Penny Feist. Penny is the Department's Strategic Service Manager. She's our key lead on the conservation program as well as the rebate program. So if it's okay, I would like to ask her to complete the presentation and make the formal recommendation on the 2023 plan. Thanks.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor. City Council, Penny Feist, Public Works and Utilities. So like Don said, we, this is not unfamiliar to you, you've heard about the rebate program before, and we have decided to keep that rebate program in place the last 10 years, even though we weren't necessarily required to do so. And that's because we have become very conservation-minded, I think, as a city and as a department. And so we'll start by covering a couple of things that we've done in the last 10 years. And first, that is the creation of the Save Wichita Water website, and that's familiar because we hold or host our rebate program application materials there. But it also has a lot of information for the general public on things that they can do to reduce their own personal water usage, and it hosts the City of Wichita's internal conservation plan, what we do when we want to reduce water use in our operations. Since 2013, we estimate that the rebate program alone has saved more than 466 million gallons of water cumulatively. Another very important component of our conservation activities is our partnership with Spirit Aero Systems. In 2017, we entered an agreement where we were able to supply them with partially-treated reuse water that they can use in their manufacturing processes, and that diverts the use of potable water, which is great for our city. And since then, that's saved about 1.5 billion gallons of water. And as Don mentioned, staff continues to do things that they think will help prolong our water supply, and that is just proper management of our water rights and credits, as well as physical improvements in the wellfield in Cheney to make sure that we're reaching maximum water capacity and we're not, you know, storing sediment instead of water. So there's quite a few lines on this graph, but so along the bottom, that's a period of time, and we have projections through 2060. Going up the top left, that's our average demand in million gallons. So the top line is kind of a worst-case scenario, right? If population grows, if we bring more industry that uses a lot of water, and if we're in a drought, we can see our average million gallons of day use going up above 70 million gallons and into the future, getting close to 90 million gallons per day, which is the limit or the maximum of our supplies that are available. So we want to make sure that we're not, you know, reaching our capacities, so we implemented that 0.35% target that Don mentioned to conserve water each year going forward. And that's what the rebate program does, that's what the Spirit Partnership does, and that's what people can help us achieve through reduced use. And that's the green line. And then the blue line below is just kind of baseline. If maybe we don't experience a lot of growth, maybe things keep to the normal trend, and we're not in a drought condition, we can experience that as a possible growth pattern. The orange lines are, and the dots are probably most easy to understand, and that's our actual usage. So prior to 2010, we were above 60 million gallons per day. We dipped down until the drought in '12 and '13, where we got back up to 60 million gallons a day, and then you see that sharp decline, and we've stayed around 50 million gallons per day since then. So I think that there's a lot of good things happening. I think people are naturally switching to some water-efficient devices. That's really helped, and we're getting that message out there to conserve water when So the recommended next steps match those three points that Don called upon that are required for drought stage one response, and the first is voluntary reduction of water usage that we're going to call upon the public to do. So in order to facilitate that, we'll work with the communications team to develop some additional materials and increase our public presentations. Secondly, we'd like to extend and expand the Water Conservation Rebate Program. And finally, we're going to continue to work with city departments to ensure that the City of Wichita organization is reducing its own water usage. Limiting outdoor water usage will be the most impactful. People who are irrigating especially can, you know, lower their usage and win-win their bill by reducing outdoor water usage. And then as a community, everyday actions will also make a difference. The rebate program is that incentive to help people switch from maybe an older device that uses more water to a newer device. And we have historically offered those for clothes washers, dishwashers, toilets and dual flush kits, rain barrels, rain sensor shut-offs, and smart irrigation controllers. I mentioned that we'd like to extend it. Typically, it's about April when I'm here, asking to begin the rebate program, but given the drought condition, we'd like to begin it tomorrow, January 11th. In addition, we'd like to increase the funding allocation. We typically allocate or recommend city council allocate $100,000, and that's where we'd like to start this time, but given the fact that we're starting sooner, we'd like the option to allocate an additional $25,000 if we see that funds are going to be exhausted prior to the end of the year. Additionally, we'd like to invite our wholesale customers to be able to participate and allocate $25,000 for those customers. So that's like the City of Derby, Valley Center, Kechai, they purchase water from us in a wholesale agreement. They can administer their own residential program and work with us to receive a credit on their wholesale account. We'd like to expand the conservation program by adding two new devices. One would be a water-efficient showerhead, and the other would be a low-flow toilet. Currently, we only, or historically, we've only approved 1.28 gallons per flush. We would expand that to allow 1.6. Remainder of program requirements would remain the same. So it has to be a replacement device. It can't be a new device for a new build. There's a limit of five devices per customer account per year. And then the full program requirements are available on savetichatawater.com. And then finally, that third blunt point was the City of Wichita to reduce its own operations, and during the last drought, we developed an internal conservation plan, and staff recently updated that in December by talking to city departments to see what they could do. There's a couple of pages in this plan, but some of the main ideas are, we would reduce our own irrigation and transition when possible to drought-tolerant grasses. We'd reduce our vehicle cleanings. Several departments clean their vehicles on a schedule, so instead, they would go to an as-needed basis. So if you see vehicles a little less shiny than normal, that would be why. And then departments continue to identify technology upgrades that reduce daily water usage. I know our sewer maintenance division is now using a high-pressure, low-water spray nozzle for cleaning, and our stormwater division has added inspection step so that they're not cleaning things that don't necessarily need to be cleaned yet. And that's the conclusion of today's presentation. It's recommended that the city council approve of the 2023 Water Conservation Rebate Program and authorize the necessary budget adjustments. I can stand for questions.
So questions for staff? I will start with Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I had a question for you and Don. I'll start with you. How is this promoted to private sector? Like, will people at Home Depot or Lowe's be able to see that if they purchase a certain dishwasher or something, they qualify for a rebate from the city?
Yes, so we develop a flyer that we post at the retail outlets that do sell water-efficient devices, and they'll call us when they run out, so we've got a pretty good relationship with those retail outlets. We also post at the Neighborhood Resource Centers, and then the communications team helps us with a lot of social media advertisement as well.
Awesome. Thank you. Don, I had a question for you. This green sheet is all about the conservation rebate program, but you brought up an ordinance and the stages. I'm just curious, who activates that? Because it's not part of a motion, so does the administration say we're in stage one, or does the council have to vote on that?
Right, that's a great point. The actual activation of that is, was adopted into ordinance in 2013, and what the ordinance says is, when the Cheney reservoir reaches those triggers that were laid out, that the city manager is authorized to put those actions into place.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Don, this is a question a little further down the line.
Don, this is a question a little further down the line. Are there any ideas for the recycled water from the BNR plant when it's completed? Is that water, since it's going to be a little more refined, are we going to be able to find other uses for any of that recycled water?
Yeah, that's a great point, and it is something that we're looking at. I don't, I don't want to get, you know, too far out in front of it. But when we originally brought Spirit online, there were some challenges with the quality of the water. And so they had some limitations on how they could use the water in their processes. So there may be opportunities to increase the usage there. Again, I don't want to speak for Spirit or get too far out in front of that, but that is something we're looking very closely at.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fry.
Thank you. And I have questions for Don and Penny as well. So, Don, if you could go back to slide 37 real quick. I believe that's the graph that showed the rate of... Right, okay, so back in '11, '12, '13, that was a fairly quick drop-off. And I know the drought was pretty heavy at that time. Are we expecting that level of drop-off if the drought conditions continue the way they are? Can we see that kind of rate? Or because of the conservation efforts that we've done, do we see that as a lower decline, a slower decline?
Right, that's a good question. And sorry if I wasn't really clear on that before. That is really dependent upon the amount of rainfall that we get into cheney. And so to answer your question, if you take a look at this graphic, and again, this was produced by the model with projected historic drought conditions. And that would be similar to what we saw in 2011 and 2012. That was pretty extreme in terms of the amount of, or the lack of rainfall that we got and run off into cheney. And what this shows is a pattern similar to that, and this shows that we would indeed reach stage two in late 2024.
Yeah, and I'd hope that the conservation efforts that we put in place over the years will help slow that decline while we wait for that additional rainfall.
Correct. It does have some effect. That's right, but it doesn't steer us away from phase two altogether.
Which then brings up my question for Penny. Councilmember Johnson and I were in Hayes this summer, and that community has had drought conditions persist for a very long time. They don't have the access to a cheney like what we have. And they have been very strong with their messaging for some time over conservation. One of your actions talked about that marketing messages. Is that something that is triggered immediately as well? Because I think the quicker we get out on this, the better as we're in stage two.
Right, so it is triggered immediately, and it will start very soon. I know the comm team has kind of increased the messaging so far, but we're going to reevaluate what that message is. We have looked at the City of Hayes to an example. For example, I think last year, they implemented a turf program, right? So while we're rebating appliances, they're rebating square yards of turf replacement. And so we're looking to them to see what they're doing and helping us develop our message. But ours will begin immediately. And if you find that you'd like us to come to a district advisory board, for example, or another group, please let us know, and we'll have our materials ready for that conversation as well.
Yeah, that was committed my last point. Has the Sustainability Integration Board been able to review this stuff and kind of weigh in on the plans and so forth?
No, not yet. We'll present to council, and then that'll be our next step.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Councilmember Fry brought up something that sparked another thought. So part of the slide showed that as a part of stage one, we would move to more drought-resistant grasses. Is that just for city parks or green space?
Right, city parks and green spaces. We talked to golf courses as well. They have, so luckily, and also unfortunately, you know, our conservation rate structure, our rate structure is minded with conservation. So the more water you use, the more you pay for that water. And so when we called the golf department, for example, and said, hey, what are you guys doing to reduce your water? And they said, everything we can. You guys charge us a lot. So they've been doing a lot of things already, like, for example, they didn't have to refill their ponds last year, which was a really good thing for us and them. But they do look at that and, outside my depth, as far as fairways and greenways and all of that, but they do look to where they can replace grass. And then the Parks Department is very much on board. We also have new landscaping guidelines when we're installing new rights of way in public spaces that we're looking to drought-tolerant grasses as well.
Awesome. I just think we should just move to doing that in general. That way, it's never a big deal. Stage one will always have the drought-resistant grass. And to Councilmember Fry's point, we were also on Garden City, and we saw a golf course that had a whole lot of natural grasses around it, and the only space that was really green was the actual fairways. And I'm not a golfer, so I don't know the terms, but the places that you play on. So I think that would be good. And maybe even outside of turf, if we can incentivize just buying those drought-resistant grasses, seeds or whatnot.
Right, and I know, for example, Nascar Park, right? When that was designed and executed, they did a turf and artificial grass there. The Advanced Learning Library, I think, has a drought-tolerant grass. And so we've seen some of that recently, but I think that going forward, it's a great idea. We'll keep that in mind for all.
Thank you. Further questions for staff? So what I'm hearing from my colleagues and from staff, it seems like this plan was developed, or the primary aspect of this plan was developed in 2013, and it seems like there is a, I guess, a desire to possibly see what we could be doing, to be proactive as we move forward. We didn't have a sustainability board back in 2013. We do now. I think there is a lot more urgency on addressing this in a proactive way. And so perhaps we could ask staff, beyond this item today, could we dive back into those plans that we have and see if there's more that we can be doing to get more value out of our drought plan as we move forward? So with that, we'll open up to the public for public comment on this. Seeing none, we'll be discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion? If there's no further discussion, then I will make a motion. But first, I do want to thank staff and really the public for stepping up and being a part of the solution. I think that one of the things that we can do is ensure that we are incentivizing folks to come alongside us, to really not just use less water, but actually utilize this program to buy better appliances that will overall help with this situation. And I just, again, want to applaud staff and the folks from 2013 who had that forward-thinking mindset of knowing, recognizing this actually is an issue, and it's one that we need to get ahead of before we have to do what other cities have had to do, which is more extreme regulatory-type responses to a crisis. So this is a much better approach to it. Hopefully, this type of policy where we are incentivizing folks to come alongside and be a part of the solution, hopefully that we could stick to that, and it doesn't have to get to more restrictive policy, but it's going to take all of us. So with that, just again, thank you, staff, for working on these programs and expanding this program. And I'll go ahead and make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the 2023 Water Conservation Rebate Program and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion is seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open. All members cast their vote. Have received 78 votes, that motion does indeed pass. Madam Clerk.
Access controls and security camera contracts.
Morning. Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Chris Sewell, Public Works and Utilities. We're going, oh, there we go. Now we got a handle on it. This particular item, we're asking for approval of two contracts to address two RFPs that we issued. One was for access control. That's your badge in any door that is controlled by that system, as well as a contract for security cameras and the software to support those. We received two proposals from the same two companies for both of these RFPs, and the selection committee unanimously approved Sanifer for both of those contracts. They are also an EBE-registered vendor with the city. These contracts both have 50,000 per project limits, 450,000 per year, and they are initially for one year with four annual renewal options. The access control project also includes an initial upgrade to the system we have now. Our current system is no longer supported for both software and hardware, so it is necessary to upgrade it. This will include both the security software, the server inside City Hall, as well as the main brain controllers at roughly 42 sites. The contractor estimates they will be done in six months for approximately $263,000. And importantly, our current badges will work throughout this upgrade process, so you won't have to worry about that. Funding for this project will be using funds that the city council has already approved, and we have initiated. That is the 2022 City Facility Improvements, the general fund. This fund is prioritized using our DST, that we prioritize the work on critical assets first, using optimization software. And a functioning security system would certainly be a critical system we need to keep in operation. Legal has reviewed both contracts, proved them to form, and staff recommend city council approve the contracts and authorize necessary signatures.
Thank you. Is there questions for staff in this item? Seeing none, thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? Seeing none, we'll be discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Will the city manager's badge still work through this?
Unfortunately, yes.
Thanks.
Know you, Chris.
Yeah. The record show that question was asked during the discussion phase, and therefore should be struck from the record.
There'll be a new staff opening, by the way.
Yeah. Further discussion. All right, if there's no further discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the contracts and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open. All members shall cast their vote. It's, have received 68 votes, that motion does pass. I am just, it's really not my place, but I'm going to say that Councilmember Blueba had a funeral to attend, so he's not with us right now. He spoke beforehand, but that's why we're going to six votes now instead of seven votes. So I do want to just put that out there. He's not Dunkin' Donuts or anything, drinking coffee. He had an important thing he had to go to. Madam Clerk.
Supplemental design agreement number one for LW Clap Park Master Plan.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Troy Haltman, Director of Parks and Recreation. The item that I have for you today is in regards to Clap Park Master Plan implementation. But I'd also like to add in design as well, as part of the descriptor of this project. So a little bit of background. LW Clap is a former golf course that was located, or is still located, as a park at Oliver and Harry. It was closed in 2019 following the 2018 Golf Sustainability Review. A little bit more background, as we closed it, we did a lot of community engagement. We did a revisioning or an envisioning project that was held in 2019. And with a lot of those items and ideas, we moved forward to a 2020 LW Clap Master Plan that was started and led by our consultants, Confluence, a landscaping firm. They were selected through a competitive process at that time. I think there was other three other firms that were interviewed for that. A little bit more background, the master plan process resulted in a lot of great information about what we could do with this space, what was really interested from the community to see what happens in this park. And there was a lot of different ideas I came across. Some of it was really an idea of a catalyst space, similar to what we have with Stryker. But the survey also resulted in really wanting to see natural green spaces as one of the number-one very important items for this area, saving the trees, adding a dog park, and a few other amenities to really support this park for the neighborhood. Some more background, so as we move forward with the master plan, which is different than the design plan, this is what was created, and this is something that went to park board as well, came to council, which was approved. What we do with the master plan, we put a plan together that kind of synthesizes what can we do? What are the biggest ideas? How far can we go? What can we do with this property? And so these were all the ideas that were implemented into this master plan, but it's not the design. Since the approval of the master plan, the city staff and the board of park commissioners have had a lot of responses from the public, really wanting to keep this park very much natural, really reducing any kind of large amenities that go into there, not disturbing the existing trees, and really using this more as a natural space rather than a designed Currently, the park is experiencing a lot of use since the closure of the golf course. We have a disc golf course there that is extremely popular, and we have some other events, a lot of special events are happening there. Recently, we've held a couple cross-country events, as well as many other special events. We have partnership with the police department where we do our candy crawl, one of our most popular Halloween events, and it drew close to 1,000 people that day. And then on the, on regular days, a lot of walkers and runners use this park, as well as bicycle folks. Bike Walk Wichita has really promoted this space for the community, so Bike Walk Wichita has several events out there on a regular basis. So some of the issues that we have at this park is really addressing some of the infrastructure. And that was one of the issues of why we closed the golf course. The golf course couldn't sustain a lot of these repairs, particularly to the bridges and some other infrastructure, the trails that we have out there. And so we have several of these bridges closed because they're just not safe, and that's going to be one of the first priorities with this plan, is to address all the safety and address all of the major infrastructure issues that we have at this park. So the analysis, due to feedback from the public and the deteriorating bridges, phase one funds will be used for the following improvements. Bridges and creeks will also include other types of infrastructure, an inclusive playground, which is something that was really brought forth in this project. We have a great inclusive playground at the northwest part of the city, at Cedar County Park, and so we wanted to have one on the opposite side of the city. And we've already had some really great ideas of what we could do with an all-inclusive playground, which would be really, really awesome. Other improvements would be improving the parking lots. We have an opportunity to talk to the school district and see if there can be an opportunity to work with them in improving, or actually adding, a parking lot at the far end of the park, and then a dog park as well, which is extremely popular. Every time we put out a dog park or talk about making improvements to dog parks, it's really well-received. As other funding is allowed, other improvements will be made throughout the park, and we'll prioritize those with staff, as well as feedback from stakeholders and the users of the park. We have a supplemental agreement with Confluence, the design firm that created the master plan, has been prepared for phase one improvements. So some of the financial considerations, the expenses, the total, I'm sorry, the current contract for the amount of $2,600, I'm sorry, $206,000 was approved on February 18, 2020. The proposed cost for the supplemental design of agreement number one is $5,000, I'm sorry, $530,600, bringing the total contract to $736,006. I'm really having troubles with my numbers today. So the budget that we have, the existing budget right now is approximately $300,000, was approved on February 18, 2020, and was funded by the general obligation funds. The adopted 2023/2032 CIP budget includes $2,519,462 in general obligation funds for 2023, which I would also like to add, in 2024, we have an additional approximately $2.5 million. The master plan also implements a $300,000 item for art to be installed at the park as well. So the staff is recommending initiation of the full amount of $2,819,462 for 2023. When added to the existing budget of the previous amount that was approved of $312,500, the total budget for now will be $3131,962, with additional dollars coming in 2024. So the recommended action, is recommended that the city council adopt the amending, bonding resolution, authorize the initiation of the project, approve supplemental design agreement number one, and authorize necessary signatures. Available for any questions.
All right, I've got a few questions on the board for you.
Mr. Ray, if I could, if you wouldn't mind, if I could just make a few supplemental comments before council questions, if that's all right.
Where's yours?
There's been some... There's been some discussion, and I think a misconception, about what this contract is providing. This is not just another planning initiative. As Mr. Hauptman discussed, there was some initial planning work and master planning development that involved substantial community involvement. We're now to the point where we're implementing the first phase, and there is some initial planning work that's a portion of this, but it's also the preparation of plans and specifications. So it's engineering work that is necessary to get us to the point of going out to bid, and that's very common with all of our capital improvement projects. There's also construction administration, so once bids are received for the, under this contract, Confluence will be doing contract administration work as well. So this is, it's not just going out and doing another planning initiative, and I just wanted to make that clear to the council as you go ahead and consider this item, because I do think that was an unfair characterization of what's in front of you today.
And Mr. Manager, before we get to questions on the board, I'll take chair's privilege by asking a follow-up question. Something to this scale in the past, at least in your experience, is this something that we have been capable or have done in-house in the past?
The answer over the last 10 years is no. We right-sized our engineering organization to be able to do many of our routine projects, but that is conditioned on the fact that we will hire supplemental engineering firms, or will hire firms to do supplemental engineering work. So we're capable of doing a base level of service, but we have not added a significant engineering staff to be able to do everything in-house. And in fact, many of the capital improvement projects, most of what comes in front of you, includes an engineering and design element.
Thank you. We will get your water with you. Good. We've got quite a few people on the board to ask questions. We're going to start off with Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you, Troy, for the presentation, and thank you to your staff for all the hard work on this. I was going to kind of echo exactly what the city manager said, that this was to study, design, and implement. So this is actually kind of the first steps that we need to do to be able to see this plan come to fruition, and this is the first phase, correct? This is not everything that's going to happen at Clap, but just the first phase.
So we do have additional dollars in 2030, another $4.6 million. And so as we finish this project Phase One, we'll be seeing what are some of the other demands, what is the vision for the park, and we'll be able to use that $4.6 million at that time.
Okay. And then I also just, this is just kind of a comment that I'd like to make, but I'm glad to see that one of the first priorities is going to be for the safety, for the bridges and for pedestrians. I too am a member of Bike Walk Wichita and very glad that that's one example of people who I knew utilized that space and just want to make sure that it's safe. Just one other kind of comment, if you will. I saw that there's going to be $300,000 allocated for artwork, and that will be, I'm assuming, within the playground and within the dog park. Is that correct?
It'll be somewhere with those projects, but we need to get a little bit more through the design, and we'll need to get artists on board and help us with the design and see what needs to happen.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you for all your work.
Councilmember Fry.
Thank you. Troy, just to be clear, on the presentation and the green sheet, we talk about the request for the design contract, the $536,000. But then you go on to say that your staff is recommending initiating the $2.89 for the capital improvement. That's not what we're voting on today, because this design work still has to come back to us for approval.
Correct.
So you want that money, and I get that, and that's what we have got budgeted in the CIP, but today, we're not authorizing the spending of that $2.8 million for the capital improvements.
What we want to do is we want to have that approved, so we can move forward with the design, yes.
Right. I understand the design part.
Initiate the dollars, so we can have those dollars prepared to be initiated, but we will bring the design back to council for your approval.
Right. I just want to make sure that we're not voting on that $2.89 million funding for the actual implementation until we've actually seen the design recommendations.
So it's been pretty common for all of us, in all of our past projects, to initiate the dollars for a project, and with the idea that we're going to start the design, and when we go through different phases of the design, it goes to design council, goes to staff review, but eventually comes back to council as well.
I think the manager wanted to jump in there.
Well, Troy's accurate in what he's saying. Many times, if you think November, December, there's a number of engineering projects that come forward where we authorize, ask the council authorize the budget. However, the plans are still under development, and you approve the project plans later on before we go out to bid.
But no construction or anything will take place until we've actually seen the design.
Absolutely correct, yes. Because we also, I've taken the park board, make sure that everybody's on board with the design as well.
Yeah.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a few things. One, is that Snow Hill going to go back to Clap Park?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
The Snow Hill.
What about the Snow Hill?
I have a few ideas, but we'll save that for another discussion.
Okay. The other things, I support the direction Vice Mayor is taking Clap Park and wants to go on the inclusive playground. I just want to see if there's a way with the bridges that we don't just build regular bridges, and if there's something cool, whether it's stamped concrete or something there that could be part of a trail, a learning experience, so it's not just a regular bridge there.
So to add on to my response to Councilmember Tuttle, is once we get the artist on board, and they might have some ideas of what we can do within budget for extra design and ideas for the bridges, amongst other things as well. So we're going to be obviously doing the bridges. If we can do something fancy, something a little bit different, we want to do that. But I think a lot of the focus is really going to be on the inclusive playground. But that's why we bring on an artist, so they can help us with some of those ideas.
Okay. And then lastly, I've said this to Vice Mayor Hoheisel, it would be nice to see even more trees and build at least a part of that park, like Central Park in New York, where kind of walking through like a forest or something like that. I know it'd take years for those to grow, but just a thought.
Well, we definitely are looking at resources for trees, and I think we want to make sure we put the trees in the right place. This design has taken a few different changes, especially with the addition of additional disc golf, and now that we have cross-country going over there. Cross-country folks really want to see more trees as well, so I think we're going to find the right places for additional trees. And to add to you a little bit more of the question from the mayor, and that the city manager helped answer, the design is, really gets complex, especially when we're talking about drainage, and we're talking about all the right sightlines, and we need engineering documents for all those, especially when we're dealing with the creek as well. So that's why in-house, although we have some great folks in-house, we really need those resources to contract that out to do those designs.
Vice Mayor Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. The $736,000 roughly, that's about 15% of what we're going to be spending in the next two years on the park. Is that in line with normal design agreements?
It's actually a lot less, because the $200,000, we've already spent in regards to the master planning activities, and that was a lot of community engagement. That was folks coming in, spending time with the community, different meetings that we had, and that's what gave us that master plan design that we saw earlier. So that money's already been spent. The $530,000 is the final design for what we want to do for Phase One. If you add dollars from 2023 and 2024, that's roughly $5 million. So we're talking about 10%. It's very common for design work to be about 10% of the project.
Okay. And Confluence, they, you're pretty sure that they're going to contract out where appropriate to local businesses to help them with some of the stuff that they're doing?
Yes. Part of their team is the Gredman Group, as well as PEC, so they have some local representation helping with this project as well.
Thank you.
There are further questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item, I do want to note, and Vice Mayor Hoheisel just got on the board, so perhaps he could speak to this when he obtains the floor, how great it is to have an inclusive playground, an inclusive park. I just think about my kids and the privilege we have in which we have multiple parks that my kids can go to on certain days. If we are tired of one park, we get to go to another park, and to reflect back on the fact that not every kid in our, in our community has that, can just go and participate in some of the parks that we currently have, because they're not as inclusive. So my hat's off to Vice Mayor Hoheisel and his work when it comes to reaching out to the community to see, well, what are we missing, and then what do we need, and now forwarding that idea for an inclusive park, so that other kids can enjoy, just like our children can. So my, just, I know you got the floor next, but I don't want to just miss out on highlighting the hard work that you have done for this. So Vice Mayor Hoheisel, the floor is yours.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Like the mayor is saying, the nearest inclusive playground we have is on the northwest side of town. This is right next to Hilltop and within a mile from Plainview, which are two of the communities that are the hardest hit by transportation issues and lack of resources. So making this accessible to children who are of lower income, families of lower income, is just one of the highlights that I am really excited about, because every single child should have an ability and a means to be a child and to have a childhood. So this is one of the items that comes before city council and local government that I think will have a really positive impact on the community. So I appreciate all the hard work staff has done with this, the years of planning that have gone into the Clap Park Master Plan, and I know the neighborhoods and the community around there really support this, and we're eager to get going on it. So I appreciate all the work you guys are doing.
Vice Mayor, this does reside in District Three, and therefore you shall retain the floor for a potential motion.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I recommend that the city council adopt the amending bonding resolution, authorize initiation of the project, approve supplemental design agreement number one, and authorize the necessary signatures.
And I'll second that motion. Motion's been made and then seconded. Clerk will open a roll. Members have cast their vote. Have received six yay votes to one absent. That, that motion does indeed pass. Madam Clerk.
Approval of travel from Mayor Whipple to attend the Governor's State of the State Address on Wednesday, January 11th, 2023, in Topeka, Kansas.
All right. So I have been invited to attend the State of the State Address on Wednesday, January 11th. Of course, we work in partnership with our friends at the state level, and I feel obligated to accept this invitation, and therefore will ask for the approval from my colleagues to attend the State of the State Address. Is there any questions for me? See none. I'll be happy to live text anyone who's interested in what's being said. So with that, I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the travel. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. All right. Haven't received six yay votes to one absent vote, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
Rolling into the appointments and comments section, I'm going to open up for appointments first, so we can get those out of the way. Are there any appointments? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to appoint Natalie Merton to the District One Advisory Board.
There are further appointments. There is no further appointments. I'll make a motion to accept that appointment. Is there a second?
Second.
Come on, Vice Mayor. Seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. Have received six yay votes, that motion does indeed pass. Back on to comments. Are there comments or discussion for the good of the body? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to thank former Vice Mayor Becky Tuttle for her work as Vice Mayor and all that she did for the community. Did a great job, so wanted to thank you for that. Also, congratulations to our new Vice Mayor. I know that you will do great work as well. Looking forward to your time as Vice Mayor and filling in for the mayor, and just wanted to say that. Thank you both.
Just a follow-up to that, I do expect great things out of our Councilmember Hoheisel, who is serving as Vice Mayor for the next year, in part, because he is a Councilmember of District Three, in which the district that I reside in, which means that when my neighbors come and have suggestions for what we should be working on, I get to tell them, well, your Councilmember is actually the Vice Mayor now and has a lot of pull, and I can't wait to send people your way and to together improve our city.
I appreciate that, Mayor.
Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, and I too want to echo Councilmember Johnson's comments for Vice Mayor Tuttle. Thank you for your year of service. You definitely have a servant heart, and it shows not only for the constituents that you have for District Two, but in your role as Vice Mayor, what you did for the city. So thank you for that. You're a good friend, a colleague, and someone that I continue to learn from. Also, I'd like to ask this body to consider our Friday schedule. Recently, we lost Fire Captain Larry Fearborn, and his funeral is Friday morning at 10:00. We typically have an agenda review at 11:00. I personally would like to attend his service Friday morning, and I would ask this, this body to consider maybe pushing our agenda review to 1:00 that afternoon, or 9:00 in the morning, you know, whatever works for most people, but I'd like to have that discussion.
Definitely. And thank you, Councilmember, for bringing this up. Larry the Legend is definitely something that, a person that we want to show our respect to. So, Mr. Manager, I don't know if this discussion we can have now, or if there's, because I know that you have to line up staff and so on, but...
We should be good at the 1:00.
1:00? Okay. Excellent. Do we need a motion, or are we just okay? Excellent. Again, thank you, Councilmember Fry, for bringing this up. For those who are watching, our agenda review will be at 1:00 on Friday and not at 11:00. Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to echo Councilmember Johnson and Fry's remarks. Vice Mayor, or Councilmember Tuttle, you have led by example for the last year, and I'm grateful to have had an example to look to for my, my year as Vice Mayor. I would also like to thank the rest of my colleagues. You have all worked well with me, to teach me how things operate around City Hall and different aspects to look at. You've all been very kind. This is a year that I think our one-year anniversary from when Councilmember Ballard and I were sworn in. So you've done a lot to help us out and to show the true meaning behind local government, which is helping our neighbors out, helping our community out, making sure that we leave behind a better place for our children and the generations to come. So I'd like to thank everybody here for their work over the last years. Thank you.
Further discussion. See none. Further discussion, we do have a motion for executive session. So I'm with the city council recess into executive session for 30 minutes to receive information to a civil action pursuant to KSA 754319B2 for pending litigation and legal advice. The executive session is required to protect the attorney-client privilege and the public interest. We will begin the executive session at 10:45, which will give members an opportunity to take a short break. We will reconvene back in this chamber at 11:15, in which we will either extend the executive session or we will end the meeting. So that is the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll. Members have cast their vote. We're going to ask that all members cast their vote. There we go. Haven't received six yay votes to one absent vote, motion passes. At 10:45, we will be in executive session. Thank you all.